It's my pleasure to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order. And this time, I will call upon Commissioner Richard Uribey to lead us in invocation.
As we gather together, we praise you for this day and your purpose for it. Reset our agendas as we sit in your presence. For you assure us that where two or more gather in your name, you are here. Recalibrate our intentions and refocus our hearts. Your will for our lives does not always reflect our plans. Change them to reflect your will. Help us to understand that we do not need full clarity to walk into the unique purpose you have inlaid in our lives. Lift our eyes to seek you first today and always, surrendering our need to achieve, understand, and be known. Shift our perspective to seek your peace above all else. In every situation we ponder in our daily lives, let the Holy Spirit translate your commands. Give us renewed strength and godly courage to obey you without questioning. Forgive us for striving beyond our means, worrying, and forcing results. Only you know what lies ahead. You are our God, you are our good Father, just and righteous. Though our circumstances will be unfair from time to time in this life, you are always our unwavering protector and shield. Keep the words of King David fresh in our minds and renew our hearts to the tune of your truth. I lie down and sleep; I wake again because the Lord sustains me. Let your peace rain down on us today. In Jesus' name we pray.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone virtually to our meeting, and we hope that you're participating by viewing this meeting online. We know we have a lot of staff that are participating online, and this is, I think, the first all-mask City Commission meeting. Commissioner LaHaut led the way last meeting by setting the example for us, and now we're required by county order to keep these masks on. It's a good idea. So with that, I also like to tell everybody that Anita and I hope that you all have a wonderful Easter holiday and that you were able to celebrate the Easter celebration in some way with a religious activity and as we did by going to our church service online. And even though it was different, it still brought us together as a faith community, and so we appreciate everyone who's helping to support our community that way. With that, I'm going to go to citizen communication and input. So is there any... We have two that have signed up, have three that have signed up.
Yes, sir.
And so, first one is?
Is Jay Rama regarding the hotel industry. So I'm going to go ahead and call him here.
Okay.
And so he'll give you the last three minutes if that's okay. Hello? Is this Mr. Jay Rama?
Yeah.
This is another Sondo City Secretary to the City of Harlingen, and you signed up to, under Citizens Communication, regarding to speak about the hotel industry. And we're going to allow you three minutes. So I'm going to go ahead and start the clock.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and start the clock, and I'm going to tell you exactly when it's going to start, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead. The clock has started.
I would like to thank you, Mr. Boswell, Mr. Stern, as well as the City Commission for your dedication and for listening to our hotel leaders here in Harlingen today. Some of you made calls to speak to us personally today, and we appreciate that very much. A brief introduction about myself. My name is Serang Jay Rama. We own and operate several hotels throughout Cameron County. To begin, in 2019, Harlingen Hotels had over $21 million reported in revenue, which equals to about $2 million in hotel occupancy tax revenue. Now I will begin to read the email I sent out to the City of Harlingen officials on April 14, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. "I'm writing you today on behalf of the hospitality industry in the City of Harlingen. In the wake of the coronavirus COVID-19 outbreak, I'm representing the entire hospitality industry and majority of the hotel owners in the City of Harlingen at their request. Please see the list below for all hoteliers that have been in communication concerning this letter. As you can understand, the coronavirus COVID-19 outbreak has caused disruption posing unique challenges for the hospitality business, which is affecting our ability to pay debt, payroll, accounts payable, and other overhead expenses. Our customer base mainly consists of corporate, sports travel, maquiladores, and tourism from surrounding areas. Since the restrictions were imposed, our occupancy has declined by more than 70% since March for the entire group. We also estimate that once the pandemic and restrictions are lifted, that it will take approximately six months to recover. Our hotels employ many people whose livelihoods depend on our performance. Some examples of cities taking action recently are as follows. The City of Corpus Christi has partnered with Lyft Fund to provide small businesses with access to loans of up to $25,000 to help recover from the losses suffered under the restrictions designed to slow the spread of COVID-19. The City of Buddha has taken a proactive approach and has been in communication with hotel owners and the hospitality industry leaders from the very beginning of COVID-19 outbreak. Just recently, the City of Buddha has entered or enacted a hotel occupancy tax emergency relief program."
10 seconds, Mr. Rama.
Yeah, so the hospitality industry here in Harlingen and the owners will be meeting here with leadership in the coming days. We're committed to helping to trade and support a viable community.
All right, Mr. Sir.
It is your turn, Mr. Rama.
So we received your letter, and we are, we have all, I think, read your letter, and we, and the city manager and I have arranged to meet with representatives of your, of the hotel group on either Friday or Monday.
Monday.
And so, we can't discuss this item because it's not on the agenda, but we are going to discuss it with you at a separate meeting on Monday. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay. The next person that we have signed up for Citizens Communication?
The next person there is Ron Lozano, and the address is 2410 Riverside Drive. And he wants to talk on item number three on the agenda.
What's the?
Item number three, which is a presentation from the Texas Emergency Care Commission.
Okay. So go ahead. So we're going to, I'll take those comments at when we take up these, those items, and I'm going to move item three down to the bottom of the agenda before the executive session item, so that all three of those items are grouped together. So if, I don't know if we can let Mr. Lozano and the other lady who both, who want to speak on stack know that, but we'll be taking those up later in the meeting. We'll call them at that time. So the next item on the agenda is item one, proclamation proclaiming the week of April 13 through April 17 of 2020 as Community Development Block Grant Week. And to support this valued program that has made tremendous contributions to the liability of enhancing the block infrastructure, public services, and economic vitality of our community. And we urge Congress to seriously recognize the outstanding work and to continue to support this great program. So thank you to all of our board members of the City of Harlingen who worked so hard to make sure these clubs are presented to you. Were you all clapping because I didn't read the whole proclamation? Okay. Next item is item number two, the presentation regards to the City of Harlingen's response to COVID-19. Dan and Carlos.
Mayor, Commissioners, I have a presentation I'm going to share on the screen. So it didn't come up. Hold on. No, I'm doing it. Yeah, got it. Yeah. Got it. Okay. Y'all can see that, right? Okay. So wanted to go over the activities and updates on the city's response to COVID-19. I want to start off with a timeline of events. December 15, 2019, that's the approximate date, the first reported case of COVID-19 in Wuhan, China. On December 31, 2019, the World Health Organization alerted of unknown etiology. And on January 1, Wuhan market closed as a result of the COVID-19. On January 7, Chinese authorities identified the virus. On January 18, the first human-to-human transmission of COVID-19 was reported. And on January 19, the first case in the United States in Washington was reported. February 8, total number of deaths from COVID-19 worldwide surpasses SARS. February 13, the first case in Texas is reported in San Antonio. On March 1, the first death in Texas is reported. On March 12, 2020, the mayor convenes a meeting with the Harlingen School Superintendent, Dr. Archivassos, city manager, state, county, and city health authorities to discuss planning for emergency response related to COVID-19. March 13, President Trump declares national emergency. The same day, Governor Greg Abbott declares state of disaster in Texas. On the same day, the city staff began to have video meetings to coordinate and implement our emergency management plan. March 14, Judge Eddie Trevino declares a state of disaster for Cameron County. March 17, Mayor Boswell signs disaster declaration to run concurrent with county and state declarations and follow the CDC guidelines, again, as related to COVID-19. March 17, mayor meets with city manager, city attorney, assistant city manager, and police chief to discuss implementation of disaster declaration and appointment of health authority. On March 18, the City Commission approves the resolution extending the local disaster declaration and appointment of Dr. Michael Mowen as the city's health authority. On March 19, Mayor Boswell swears in Dr. Michael Mowen as health authority. Also on March 19, Governor Greg Abbott issues four executive orders. The first, limiting gatherings to 10 or less. The second, closing down dining areas at all restaurants. The third, limiting visits to nursing homes. And the fourth, closing all schools in the state of Texas. On the same day, March 19, the Texas Commissioner of Public Health declares a public health disaster because of COVID-19. Also on March 19, the first reported case in Cameron County, and it was a travel-related case. On March 23, Cameron County judge issues a shelter-in-place order, in effect until April 7. On March 23, same day, the Harlingen EDC launches a COVID-19 economic impact survey, and we're going to touch more on that in just a minute. On March 24, the mayor, city manager host meeting with the Harlingen Chamber of Commerce President Chris Gonzalez and the EDC Executive Director Aldevarz, to discuss possible business recovery assistance plans. March 25, world cases of COVID-19 reached 500,000. That's 101 days. On March 26, U.S. becomes the number-one country with highest number of cases. On March 28, the mayor convenes an emergency conference call with Judge Eddie Trevino, state, county, and city health authorities to discuss the first reported case of COVID-19 at the Veranda Nursing Home. On March 30, Batty Baptist operates a mobile testing site at the Marine Military Academy, and we want to thank them for their generosity. April 3, world cases reach 1 million. It took only nine days to go from 500,000 to 1 million cases in the world. On April 5, the Harlingen Health Authority issues a health control directive of nursing homes and long-term care facilities, and that directive was restricting the sharing of staff amongst nursing homes. On April 6, the first death in Cameron County is reported from the Veranda Nursing Home. Also on April 6, Cameron County Judge Eddie Trevino extends the shelter-in-place order until April 22. On April 7, the mayor convenes a Zoom meeting conference with city health authorities and nursing home administrators to discuss ways to mitigate spread of COVID-19 to other Harlingen nursing homes. On April 7, Cameron County Emergency Management issues an order regarding nursing homes and long-term care facilities. Also on April 7, Mayor Boswell and our health authority issue a healthcare advisory regarding the use of face mask coverings in public spaces. On April 9, the second and third deaths in Cameron County in Harlingen are reported from the Veranda, Veranza, Veranda, sorry, and Windsor Atrium nursing homes. Also on April 9, Cameron County judge issues order that basically makes it mandatory for the use of mask or face coverings effective April 13. That was his past Monday. The executive order also limits the number of passengers in a vehicle to two, recommended only one, and limits travel for children under the age of 14. On April 10, world cases reach 1.5 million. It took only seven days to get from 1 million to 1.5. On April 11, the number of cases in the United States reached 500,000. On April 15, the total number of confirmed cases in Cameron County reaches 239, and 73 of those have recovered. So in responding to COVID-19, it requires a lot of coordination and a lot of partnerships. We want to talk a little bit about the partners. We want to recognize Batty Baptist Health System, Harlingen Medical Center, South Texas Emergency Care, the Texas Division of Emergency Management, the Cameron County Health Department, Lowes &amp; Fishes, the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation, the Marine Military Academy. I want to actually thank the Marine Military Academy. Not only did they lend their site for a test site, they've also been making masks for first responders, and we want to recognize that and thank them for that. And Lowes &amp; Fishes, of course, Bill Reagan and his staff always do a great job for homeless, but during this time, they're also preparing meals for needy families and giving them So response and coordination. The mayor's disaster declaration triggers the activation of the emergency management plan. That's very important. The mayor himself serves as the emergency management director under Local Government Code 4181015. The mayor appoints the emergency management coordinator, who is our assistant city manager, Carter Sanchez, to coordinate the implementation of the emergency management plan. But the mayor's declaration makes the city eligible to seek state and federal reimbursement for expenses incurred in the response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Every city department has a section in our emergency management plan. In addition to that, they're also developing, or have developed, a continuity of operations plan. And basically, what that plan does, in the event our staff becomes ill, how are we going to fill those slots, and how do, how do we continue to provide services to our citizens? So that is in place. As of March 13, we, the staff, continue to have morning Zoom conferences with several staff members at 8:30 every morning. That includes all directors, Harlingen Water Works, our airport, and staff from South Texas Emergency Care. And also as of March 13, the mayor and staff participate in daily conference calls with the Cameron County judge and emergency management coordinator with Cameron County, every morning at 10 o'clock. As of March 18, the Harlingen Fire Department and Police Department modified emergency response protocol calls. They coordinate with South Texas Emergency Care. South Texas Emergency Care monitors COVID-19 locations. South Texas Emergency Care also provides the locations to our dispatch, so that in the event either fire or police is dispatched to one of those addresses, they are informed to wear full personal protective equipment while going to that, that response call. And what that does, that reduces the amount of personal responding, personnel responding to the incident, and lowers the exposure risk for our staff. Also, in response and coordination, our police department and code compliance staff have been monitoring and responding to calls and complaints regarding COVID-19. And the departments, in addition to everything we've been doing, we're also going to be implementing additional safeguards to protect city staff by checking their temperatures before starting work. We have ordered thermometers. We, we expect them to come in this week. So fire and police are already doing that. We're going to be implementing that for all departments. And all COVID-19-related response expenses are being tracked and logged into the Texas Department of Emergency Management system, the disaster summary outline. To date, our expenses total $78,846. And the city has also submitted requests to the Texas Department of Emergency Management for additional personal protective equipment, mask, and other equipment, and we've also submitted a request on behalf of nursing homes. And we're also providing some guidance to nursing homes on where they can gather, gain some additional PPEs for their staff and some equipment that they have requested. And so, Harlingen Police Department started tracking COVID-19-related calls and complaints on March 18. As of Monday, April 13, they have responded to 138 calls related to COVID-19. And those calls range from too many people in stores, others not complying, medical-related between neighbors. The majority of the calls are, were to major retailers like Walmart, HEB, and Dollar Store. They, they did respond to some calls to some nonessential businesses that were initially staying open. Once we talked to them, they closed down, they complied with the order. Within our Harlingen Police Department, all employees are issued masks, gloves, and they're providing, they're provided cleaning and sanitizing supplies in their work areas. And the use of mask is mandatory at all time. The police department lobby is closed except for entryway where one person is allowed at a time. All others must make, make appointments with officers. That limits the exposure not only to our staff, but also to the citizens coming in. All patrol units are cleaned at the beginning of a shift and after persons are transported. The shift and division meetings are held outside in open air to allow for social distancing. And all staff have their temperatures taken at the beginning of the workday. Anybody registering a temperature of 100.4 or greater or showing flu-like symptoms are sent home until a doctor has cleared them to come back to work. Again, with Harlingen Police, only necessary arrests are being made during this time. Those that can be cited into court at a later date will be. All police vehicles are sanitized after transport of any arrestee. All arrestees have temperature taken and medically screened upon arrival. If they have flu-like symptoms, they are taken to the hospital. Our jail employees and officers are required to wear PPEs while conducting intake of arrestees. Arrestees are limited to one per jail cell as much as possible. If there must be two in a cell, there are provided masks, and all cells are sanitized after release. Those transported to county jail have temperature checked again. If necessary, they will be medically cleared before transport. And then no visitation allowed except for attorney or clergy at our jails. So traffic stops between March 18 through April 13, our PD has made 256 traffic stops. 116 of those were in violation of the judge's orders. 94 warnings were issued, 22 citations were also issued, and four arrests. Now, the arrests weren't COVID-related, they were criminally related to other issues. So during this time, we've seen an uptick in personal-type crimes, but we've seen a decrease in property crimes, and we suspect that it's because more people are staying home as a result of shelter-in-place. Our fire department, all fire department personnel, their temperatures are checked and screened before they report to work, and any, anyone registering a temperature of 100.4 or greater is sent home until cleared by a doctor. They are all provided the personal protective equipment. We also, our fire department is also certified as a regional hazmat team, and we do have class level A, B, and C. If they have flu-like symptoms, they are taken to the hospital. Our jail employees and officers are required to wear PPEs while conducting intake of arrestees. Arrestees are limited to one per jail cell as much as possible. If there must be two in a cell, there are provided masks, and all cells are sanitized after release. Those transported to county jail have temperature checked again. If necessary, they will be medically cleared before transport. And then no visitation allowed except for attorney or clergy at our jails. So traffic stops between March 18th through April 13th, our PD has made 256 traffic stops. 116 of those were in violation of the judge's orders. 94 warnings were issued, 22 citations were also issued, and four arrests. Now, the arrests weren't COVID-related. They were criminally related to other issues. So during this time, we've seen an uptick in personal-type crimes, but we've seen a decrease in property crimes. And we suspect that it's because more people are staying home as a result of shelter in place. Our fire department, all fire department personnel, their temperatures are checked and screened before they report to work. And anyone registering a temperature of 100.4 or greater is sent home until cleared by a doctor. They are all provided the personal protective equipment. Our fire department is also certified as a regional hazmat team. And we do have Class Level A, B, and C hazmat suits. And we do have those in our stations. Right now, the city is talking to the city of Brownsville about partnering with them to utilize their test site location for testing Hardington residents. We have drafted an interlocal agreement. We have sent it to Brownsville. We are waiting on a response from them. And once we have that ready, excuse me, we will present that to the city council for consideration. This would help expedite some testing for Hardington residents. We've also sent this chart, this flow chart, out to every department. Basically, this is for employees. It kind of guides employees through a process. If they've been exposed to someone, what do they do next? If they haven't been and they continue to work, everything's fine. But it provides them with a sequence of events that should take place if they are feeling sick or have been exposed to somebody who has tested positive. Also, city-side, all events and rentals for city buildings and city parks were canceled. As of March 16th, we also closed down our libraries, our library to visitors. We also closed down our downtown improvement district office, our arts and entertainment. Again, we talked about the PD lobby earlier. The municipal court is also closed. They are doing virtual court. So they are still seeing between 20, a little over 20 folks per day through virtual conference. Our city offices are limiting access. An example of that, Longsey Hill Building. We are actually limiting only two at a time into our building, and that is to protect our city staff. Hardington Water Works, they suspended disconnects through the end of April. They also closed down their front lobby. But they're taking payments through drive-through, and they're taking payments online. And people also have access to bank drafts if they so select. Our recycling center was also closed down on March 23rd. The VIP lounge at the airport was also closed down on the 23rd. Our parks were closed, specifically our playgrounds, to restrict gatherings at our parks. So those have been closed. Our golf course is also closed, and our CVB is also closed. And so what we've done is some of our folks are working remotely, and some have been reassigned to other areas. So this is just a screenshot of one of our morning meetings. This is just a part of the screen. We couldn't get everybody on there. But we are utilizing technology for not only our staff meetings in the morning, but also for city council meetings and for board meetings. An effort to comply with the Open Meetings Act. And again, some employees are working remotely from home. We are not anticipating any furloughs or layoffs of city employees. And I want to state that for the record. We have implemented plans to reduce expenditures. And we're going to go over that in just a minute. And we are monitoring our cost savings to help reduce the impact, financial impact to our budget. So for this fiscal year, we have projected revenues for general fund of 46 million, $46.9 million. Because of COVID-19 and changes, and I'll share that with you in just a minute, we are now projecting revenues of 45.8, a $1.1 million reduction in revenue. On the hotel occupancy tax, we have budgeted revenues of $860,000. Those are very, very conservative numbers. I'm going to show you that in just a minute. Even with the way with budget was coming in, the revenues were coming in for the first part of the year, even with reductions for the rest of the year, we're still anticipating a $1.1 million revenue from the hotel occupancy tax. And so that's actually an increase of $263,000. We are holding back on some capital expenditures totaling $206,948. And we are projecting some salary savings over $500,000. And if you recall, we had the air service development program. We had set aside $1.55 million. We have a savings in that account of $262,000, and we're going to leave that alone. So the projected subtotal for that is over almost $790,000 in savings. So our unaudited beginning fund balance as of the end of September, we were at $20.7 million. The new projected revenues because of COVID-19 are 45.8. So we're estimating an ending fund balance of $17.9 million, which is approximately 132 days. Again, that is taken into account our financial hit and shortfall that we anticipate. We also have a catastrophic emergency fund of $830,493. If you include that fund amount into the estimated ending fund balance, that gives you an emergency fund or an estimated fund balance of $18.7 million or 138 working days. That is a very healthy fund balance. And so we will see our way through this crisis. So this is an express sheet that shows how we calculated those numbers. Basically, we already had the payment, we received the payment in March, and it was a negative 3% on sales tax. We are anticipating a negative 30% on sales tax for April. May, 20% negative in June, 15% July negative, and then five in August, September. We're also projecting losses in revenues on building rentals and park rentals. And that's where we come up with a $1.1 million shortfall as compared to budgeted amounts. On our hotel occupancy tax fund, you can see the bottom of the screen there. You can see that these amounts were very conservative for the rest of the year for the $860,000. But the dollar amounts were coming in much stronger than we had budgeted. So what we're projecting is a 50% reduction for April and May, about a 40% reduction in June, about 25% reduction in July, 10% reduction in August, and 5% in September for a total of $1.12 million. On communications, which is critical during this time, our primary goal is to keep the mayor, city commission, city staff, and Hardington residents informed of all COVID-related issues and matters that are important. So every day at 4:30, we're sending out notes of our morning meetings. And if you read any one document that we send you, I would encourage you to read that one document. It is a very good summary of not only our meetings, but also the Cameron County meetings. We also have notes of the county judge's conference calls. We also take notes of press conferences related to Governor Greg Abbott two or three times weekly. And we distribute the Texas Department of Emergency Management Situational Daily Report. And we distribute county judge press releases and emergency management orders. Yes, I know it's a lot of information coming at you. I know. The staff has to go through all this information, so I realize that. And so again, I would encourage you, if anything else, read the notes from the morning meetings. That's just a summary, a quick snapshot. And that's a good place to get a lot of your information. We also utilize our social media, city webpage, YouTube printed materials. We also put up posters at our parks where available. You can see on the right of your screen, that's one of the shots of a YouTube video that went up on our webpage where Mayor Boswell was swearing in, Dr. Mowen. These are some of the poster boards, sandwich boards that we put out at some of the businesses, and we put out at our city buildings, and we post it on our webpage. And some of these are also at our parks on the large eight-by-eight posters. They are in English and Spanish. And again, you see it here. But I would also guide you to our webpage at myhardington.us. On the left-hand side, you see these banners. They are all COVID-19-related banners. And then you also see our videos. Mayor Boswell has been posting videos once a week. And there's a lot of great information at our webpage. So please, I would encourage citizens to go to our webpage and get updated information. This information is updated every day, multiple times a day. Our business sector. Our city departments remain open for business. Our planning department, co-compliance, engineering, building inspections, they are all still functioning and still operating. Yes, we are still conducting inspections of construction sites. And we are practicing social distancing. We also providing our personnel with their personal protective equipment. City Hall, finance, human resources are also open for business. And access to Longsey Hill Building, where our building department is located, is limited to two people at a time, again, to protect our own staff. Public Works, Solid Waste, has been collecting our trash every day, just like they normally would. So those operations are continuing. Our street department is still out in the streets, painting stripes on roadways and taking care of our drainage systems. And our Hardington Water Works suspended our disconnects and late charges until April 31st. So as far as city business is concerned, we are still open for business and we continue to function. Going to touch real quickly on the EDC and what they've been doing. For those of the city council that didn't attend or couldn't participate in the EDC meeting this last week, they did complete an economic impact survey of several businesses to determine the impact, the level of impact into our business community because of COVID-19. And so this is just a summary of the report that they have. It's a large, very lengthy report that they put out, but they summarized it here. And what we have is that how many businesses have ceased operations because of COVID-19? And the number is 47. How many businesses have experienced economic injury because of COVID-19? 78. An estimated number of persons unemployed because of COVID-19? 382. Our social services, we stay in constant communication with Lowe's and Fish's. Bill Reagan, again, they did stop using their dining hall. They are providing meals to go. Mr. Reagan did voice a concern about a contingency plan for an additional shelter if the need came up. So staff is working on a plan to determine what is feasible. One possibility is utilizing some local hotels. In the interim, we have provided a city tent for shade over at Lowe's and Fish's. And Charlie Clark Nissan also provided them another tent. And they are also utilizing infrared thermometers to scan individuals as they come into the building. Staff has also been talking to our school district. As we know, all our school kids are out of school, and they're doing a lot of work at home. A lot of them don't have access to internet. And so what can we do to help that? So we've been talking to our school district about partnering with them to try to put together some type of Wi-Fi, citywide Wi-Fi system. Now, I will tell you that that's going to be a drawn-out process. That's not something that you simply do. But we are having those conversations, and we are moving in that direction. As a matter of fact, our 4B board has shown some interest, or expressed some interest in supporting that project. In addition to that, the city staff is working with Cameron County to put together a Meals on Wheels program to disperse meals to needy families at our soccer complex. And this is the layout that was created by our engineering department. You see the traffic flow comes in, and it guides around the parking lot, and it comes back out where people can get their meals. We are also working with RGV Food Bank to try to create a distribution site in Hardington, and we think this would be a great location for that. The latest stats on COVID-19. So in the state of Texas, 15,492 cases have been reported, 364 fatalities, and 3,150 patients have recovered. On a daily basis, 868 new cases. This is the stats for the different cities in the valley. Brownsville, I'm sorry, in Cameron County. Brownsville's 81, number of positive cases. City of Hardington's at 101. La Feria's at 6, Laguna Vista at 1, Los Fresos at 12, Puerto Isabel 2, Vanzo Viejo at 4, Rio Ondo at 12, San Menido at 14, and Santa Rosa at 6. That information is as of this morning. So according to Cameron County, 575 folks have been tested. 239 turned out to be positive, 101 of those in Hardington. 288 negative, 73 have recovered in Cameron County. 48 are pending, and we had three deaths. We have 324 that are being monitored. 140 of those have been cleared, and 184 are pending. Our hospitals, as of this morning, Batty Baptist Hardington had 10 positive cases, 15 patients under investigation, and six patients in ICU. Hardington Medical Center has six positives, five PUIs, patients under investigation, and one in ICU. This is just a graph that shows Cameron County stats. You can see here, on the 8th, we were at 108. And this morning, we are at 239. One more is Hardington. On April the 12th, or April the 11th, we were at 43 cases. April the 15th, four days later, we are at 101 cases. And that's my presentation.
Okay, so anybody have any questions?
I have a question on your unemployment numbers. They sounded awfully low versus my perception. Where did those numbers come from, the state or Cameron County?
No, those numbers came directly from the economic impact survey conducted by the EDC, and those are only tied to the responses. So it isn't a complete number. It's those that responded to the survey.
Do you remember what the number was of people that were involved in the survey? Like you said, there were 46 that had closed. How many people took the survey?
I don't have that updated number, Commissioner.
I can't remember it either, but I remember.
But it was much higher than 382.
Are you recording?
So I don't have that number with me, but we can certainly get that from the EDC.
All right, anybody have any other questions?
Yes, I had a couple of questions. Then on the presentation, you talked about the sanitation process. Is it a sanitation process that's being used, that's recommended? Is it a standard? Is everybody doing the same thing? Or, you know, how did you handle that? Because what I'm hoping is that everybody got trained to the proper way of sanitizing, and what's considered sanitation, or sanitizing anything, whether it's an office building or a police unit or the jail. Is there a standard checklist that they're following?
So they're following the CDC recommendations. But as far as being trained, police officers.
I mean, is it standardized? Everybody's doing it the same way?
I don't have a response to that, other than to say they're sanitizing their units, they're sanitizing their office areas. We do send our custodial crews out there to sanitize as well on a daily basis. So those things are being done, wiping down vehicles, using a sanitizing solution.
Right. Okay. All right. And on the chart you had, as far as the hotel and. And, and on the, the chart you had as far as the hotel and occupancy tax, your estimations as far as your projections. I, I, the way I look at that presentation is we're assuming that everybody's going to pay their taxes. Have you all taken into consideration that as this thing gets drawn out and, and, and the businesses are having this income coming in, that they may not pay their taxes? So what, what we're, what we should be getting may not be, what may not be coming in?
You're referring to the property taxes?
No, the hotel and occupancy tax. When you're looking at the revenues, you're saying we're going to 30% drop, 30% drop, then 20%. If I'm not mistaken.
50% drop.
Yeah, 30, 30, 20?
No, this is for the hotel. So that's 50% drop.
Go to the previous one.
So that's general fine.
Okay, so you see the 30%, 30%?
Yeah, so, so this is for sales tax.
Okay.
But you can see that the property tax?
Right.
Which is that first column right here. The majority of those taxes have, have already been received. So we, we are, we are, we are not anticipating a drop in property tax payments. That will go into delinquency. And so we still need to recoup our property taxes.
Well, I know, but it, 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 it should be taken into consideration that you may not collect all of it because people that are, maybe they pay on time or they pay early, may not do so?
What would you recommend, Commissioner?
No, no, I'm, I'm just asking.
No, no, I mean, if you, if you, if you let me know what you would recommend, we can plug that in and look at that and see what that looks like.
Well, I, I think, I think what they've done is they've made the projections with, with as much information as they have right now, which isn't very much. We're not going to, it's going to be hard to model this until we get probably, until we get the retail sales tax report for next month.
For next month.
And the follow, and the following month. So this will be something that will be adjusted lots of times. It's going to be kind of like COVID-19. It changes every day. And probably these projections will change every day. But based upon the information that we have right now, this is what they're projecting. The good news is at the end of the day, that we have a very, very healthy fund balance.
Correct.
And so it can, if, if there was any, if there was any example or reason why for you to tell the public why we need a fund balance, well, we're seeing it right now. This is why we need a fund balance.
That's right.
And, and so, so we, we can sustain a pretty substantial hit both the property taxes and the retail sales taxes. But we, we hope that that doesn't, obviously, we hope it doesn't happen. There's some sort of recovery towards the second half of the year or the fourth quarter. Be that as it may, we do have a very strong fund balance that, that will offset some of these things. And so I know that the finance department, Dan, will continue to, to monitor this. But right now with the information they've got, this is the best model that they can do. And certainly it's going to change as, as we, as we work through and get more information.
And to the mayor's point, in March, before we got the March payment, we were projecting a 50% reduction. It came in at negative 3%. So we plugged that number in. And so moving forward, we adjusted those numbers as well. They were much higher. They were at $2 million, but even at $2 million losses, we still have a very healthy fund balance. And we'll still be well over the 90-day fund balance requirement.
Okay, so, and my last question on the presentation, oh, no, two things. Spectrum right now is offering free wifi. So you may want to share that with the school district because, I mean, you give them a phone call, they mail them modem to whoever and it's, it's like probably.
They have.
Okay. And then the last thing, and I know we talked about this maybe the other day, about street repairs. And I told you I'd seen a meme that it was, you know, kind of joking, jokingly that, hey, we should be taking advantage of doing street repairs right now. Is there any way of, and I thought that's, that's really not a bad idea. If we're shut down and we have less traffic right now, can we not maybe tackle some projects, especially in heavily used areas that are proposed throughout this year?
So we, we will be going out for beds for the next round of overlays? And so, yes, so we're going to be doing more street projects.
But, but what I'm saying is, is do more than, than, just keep it within the budget, but maybe accelerate some?
But we have to follow our procurement process, Commissioner, so we have to bid these out. And the ones that we have that we're going to bid out, we're going to be bidding out shortly.
Okay.
So we, we have to get a set of.
I just thought it's a good idea to ramp up because the streets are kind of empty right now or emptier.
And, and we only utilizing the funds that we have budgeted from the street improvement fund.
Right, okay.
May I make just a quick comment?
Sure.
You know, my observation is, is that, and to, to, to address Richard's concern about the hotel. The hotel receives that tax money and they're supposed to bring it on to us the same way as a retailer takes in the sales tax money it's supposed to turn in. It's still, it's still something that they're liable to us. And, and so I think that's, the misconception is the hotels are empty. They're not empty. They still have visitors. We're still flying people out of the airport.
And, and a hotel occupancy, occupancy tax is an occupancy tax, right?
It's a tax, correct.
If somebody's staying at their hotel, then they pay a tax.
But they only pay a tax for what they receive the tax money from. It's not like something that they're paying because they're empty, they continue to pay. They only pay because they've rented the room and it's a percentage of the room cost. So right now, some of them are running specials. You know, they're, and so what, what they used to collect for $175 is only collecting tax on $75. The other thing I wanted to say is, number one, I just want to thank you. I know I've had lots of conversations with you about the, the communication that you've been sending out. I think your staff is doing just an outstanding job. You know, Sergio and our PIO keeping us up to date, the public up to date on the website. Mayor, your leadership, I know that you've been at the helm of all this and I just want to personally thank you for that. It makes me feel, as a citizen besides a commissioner, that, that we've got good leadership doing this. And then, and then on the Meals on Wheels, I'd like to speak with you a little bit about that because I happen to be sitting on Amigos de Vaya and we have a kitchen. And the kitchen's in San Manito, Texas. And if we, we need to utilize it, I would love to figure out how we can get.
Fantastic.
We're having a hard time because at, at Amigos de Vaya, we have what's called congregate meals. And so we cook a meal, we take it to a location, everybody comes in and eats there. And so I imagine we probably have a little bit of capacity that we can utilize to try and feed people.
That'd be great.
Our problem is, is the funding because we are a nonprofit, so. You can't see me smiling, but I got a big smile because I'm proud of what we do there.
I was, I was smiling too.
I asked my wife to put a smile on here, but she. Anyway, thank, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
And I also want to publicly thank the, the staff. They've been putting a lot of hours in. They've been working very hard.
Yes, sir.
I really appreciate them. And of course, Mayor, you, your leadership, I appreciate everything.
Commissioner has a question.
Dan, just real quick, I know across the nation, people are urged to call their mortgage companies and credit card companies to, to seek help in, I guess, delaying their payments. So as far as our tax foreclosures, are we, have we suspended those for now? Or is that something that has to, that y'all could consider to help some of these people? And then on another note, I noticed a couple of times going by the waterworks department, there's lines, obviously because the lobby has closed down. Is there any way that Tim can, I guess, waive? Because I know a lot of people have to pay with credit cards and debit cards and there's a fee for that? Is that something that they can waive to help out the constituents?
The, the fee that they charge for the credit card is, is really charged by, by the, by the bank, by the credit card companies. So that's a pass through. We collect, we have to pay that. So there's, I would encourage folks to utilize bank drafts or utilize the drive-through. And you're right, they did have a couple of days when the drive-through was full here, I think yesterday and the day before. I think maybe what we think is that the folks started getting their stimulus checks and lined up to cover their payments and made those payments. But before that time, they didn't have that issue. We did send some police officers out there to help guide traffic in and out. As far as foreclosures, Commissioner, that is not a decision that we can make at the staff level. And as far as foreclosures, we have a legal firm that handles all that for us. And so those, those still continue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any, any other questions? All right, I would also like, I just want to, I want to thank everybody and thank the staff for doing such a fantastic job while this has been going on. This has been, this, I can't believe it's only been a month, less than a month.
It only seems like hell.
Right, March 19th. It seems like it's been, it seems like a year. And, and whatever, whatever, whatever job, whatever job you had before March 19th, if it's not twice as hard now, it sure is close to being twice as hard. So I want to thank the staff for doing, doing such a great job. And I want to also kind of re-emphasize that the staff is doing an excellent job of shooting this information out in real time. You're getting it every, you know, hour or so. But if you only have time to read one report, read the, read the minutes of the meeting from 8:30. Because it really kind of aggregates a lot of the information. And I've asked Dan to send that out at kind of the same time every day, between 4:00 and 5:00, and look for that. It's only five or six pages long, but it aggregates a lot of information and a lot of this information that we're, we're getting throughout the course of the day. So it provides a very good summary. And I think that that's, that's the, the best thing to look at if, if you're having trouble keeping up. All right, thank you for that presentation. Good presentation and I'm glad we, we have all that information presented to the public as well. So on item two, or item three, we're going to push that down. And so I'll go to item four, approval of the minutes, regular meeting of March 18th, 2020. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Consent agenda, items 5A through H, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So move, Mayor?
Second.
Anyone, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item six, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the plan development PD side plan to adjust the layout and land use for 16.49 acres out of, 18 acres out of Block 6 FC Bishop subdivision, survey 41, located on the west side of Tucker Road, north of Garrett Road. Juan Garcia of JNH surveying.
So.
Mayor and City Commissioner, good afternoon.
Javier.
We have a, good afternoon, Mayor. We have an amendment to a plan development side plan. This is a, a side plan that was approved back in 2007 for a proposed presidential subdivision, but it was never developed. The developers wanted it developed at this time, but they want to make a few changes to the side plan. The subdivision is located on the west side of Tucker Road and is kind of halfway between Garrett and Lincoln Avenue. Here's an area photograph showing where the subdivision is proposed. These are the changes to amend the land use of Lot 1A from daycare to single family homes, to divide Lot 1A into three lots, to amend the street direction of Marcus Street and change the number of lots for that street, to amend the runway of Hubbard Boulevard Boulevard from 80 feet to 60 feet, and to amend the number of lots for Hubbard Boulevard from 14 lots to 16 lots. This is the before and after of what they're proposing. Basically here, originally, they wanted to have a daycare lot. And so that they're turning that into, into regular lots and changing, putting more lots in this street. A few, a few more lots on Julian Street from 14 to 17. John Street, space with both lots and then Hubbard Boulevard Street, changing the runway and dedication from 80 feet to 60 feet, and changing the lots from 24 lots to 16 lots. So it's just kind of minor changes to what was originally proposed. This is here's the zoning of plan development. Zoning, this was before the planning and zoning commission of February 26th, and they recommended approval unanimously with a agreement.
The staff recommends approval, right Javier?
Okay, we have a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, but nobody signed up for this public hearing. So I'll close the public hearing and go to item B. Consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the plan development PD side plan to adjust the layout and land use for 16.49 acres out of 18 acres out of Block 6 FC Bishop subdivision, survey 41, located at the public location. Can we have the city attorney read the caption, please?
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Hardington, amending the plan development PD side plan to adjust the layout and land use for 16.49 acres out of Block 6 FC Bishop subdivision, survey 41, located on the west side of Tucker Road, north of Garrett Road, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item seven, consideration possible action to approve the annual investment policy for the city of Hardington.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioner. The provisions of the Public Fund Investment Act and the city of Hardington's investment policy requires the city to have an investment policy and it purported to be reviewed and approved annually by the governing body. This investment policy that you have before you covers the fiscal period of October 1, 2020 through September 30th, 2021. And the investment policy addresses certain strategies and guidelines. Maybe there are eight strategies and guidelines. The first one being investment strategy. These strategies, investment strategies have, take consideration of the design to address the unique characteristics of the, of the fund groups that the city maintains. For instance, operating funds, debt service funds, capital project funds. So for operating funds, you would have to have more liquid, liquid investment in assets. Debt service would be owned quite a year when we make our annual debt service payments. And capital projects would be on a project basis. The second one is the investment objective. So the city should manage the investments of its cash with three objectives and that's the preservation and the safety of the principal, liquidity, and the end. The third is the responsibility and control. So this identifies the delegation, the authority, and the training of the investment officers, which as a finance director, I would be one of them. The responsibility of the finance director to maintain internal control structures designed to protect the loss or misuse and the standard of prudence to, to be applied to the, by the investment officer and the maintenance of, and the maintenance of ethics and avoidance of conflicts and injuries. The investment policy goes on to, to address reporting, which identifies quarterly and annual investment reports that are required to be presented to it and approved by the governing body. It identifies our investment portfolios and what kind of investments are authorized and, and investments that are not authorized. It addresses the selection of banks and dealers. So we have to go out to review the services of the deposit-free banks and to competitive bidding, no less than every five years. The safekeeping of and control of our investments. We establish insurance and collateral for safekeeping agreements, which we monitor on a daily basis. We ensure that they are collateralized at a percentage of the value. And finally, the investment policy adoption requirements, which requires the annual review and approval of the investment policy. This, this investment policy was written very well and we didn't have any changes to the policy in, in the current year. So, so staff recommends approval of this policy.
Anybody have any questions on this one? Is there a motion to approve the investment policy?
Mayor, Mayor, if I may?
Are you sure we discussed if there's some people there that are viewing and that cannot hear?
They're not, they're having trouble hearing online.
And if they cannot hear, then that just creates a new dollar to me because it's not just enough.
Okay, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing in the room. So what, so we're having, so those that are getting, those that are watching streamed are having trouble hearing us or the, the Zoom participants?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mayor, were you able to hear my presentation or?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Hold on there.
Are we live right now?
Well, my, my, my question was, Commissioner, whoever reported this to you, are they having trouble hearing us or just the Zoom participants? trouble hearing us or just the Zoom participants?
If they're watching streamed or having trouble hearing us or the Zoom participants?
Have a Zoom person talk so we can hear it.
Everybody's coming out good except for Robert.
Robert, can you go ahead and say something?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Can you go see?
Who's that?
Mayor, can you hear me?
Everybody else's mic is not hearing just.
Are you able to hear me now?
Wait, hold on, Robert.
There's a delay, there's a delay.
[inaudible]. If they have a trouble hearing us or just the Zoom participants?
Everybody hears.
There's a delay.
So Gabe just texted me that it sounds fine on the web, and it says just the Zoom.
It's the Zoom, yeah, that's what it says. Hearing problems with Zoom participants.
You can't hear Robert.
Robert, you have to speak up a little bit louder, Robert.
Okay, did you want me to go over the presentation again?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, no, short, summarize it. This is the same investment policy that we had last year. It has the same elements in it. There are no changes. Staff's recommending the approval. It has an implementation strategy and investment objectives, responsibility and control requirements, reporting, investment portfolios, selection of banks and dealers, safekeeping and control, and the investment policy adoption requirements, all set forth there on this report. So is there a motion to?
And nothing has changed.
Right, no.
Right. So is there a motion to adopt the investment policy?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. All right. Okay, let's see if we can hear the next presenter. Item eight is the consideration and possible action to authorize the chief of police to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the United States Marshal Service to join efforts to investigate and apprehend local, state, and federal fugitives to improve public safety and violent crime.
That hurts.
So Chief, Chief Castor.
Can you hear me?
Hold on, Chief.
Okay, let's see if we can hear the next presenter. Item eight is the consideration and possible action to authorize the chief of police to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the United States Marshal Service to join efforts to investigate and apprehend local, state, and federal fugitives to improve public safety and the.
That works.
That's that failsafe sound.
No, we can't hear you, Mike.
You can only hear, it sounds like it's coming across here rather than the correct speech.
Well?
All right, well.
Let me see if I can present it for him.
Okay, I think that, Dan, you can present these, please. Just go ahead and present the next three items yourself.
I'm getting there, Mayor. Give me a minute. I wish staff would stop sending me texts. So this is an MOU with the United States Marshal Service. The intent of the joint effort is to investigate and apprehend local, state, and federal fugitives, thereby improving public safety and reducing violent crime. And you have a copy of the MOU in your packet, and staff is recommending approval. This is something that we've done in the past, and so staff, again, is recommending approval to move forward with this MOU.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution to authorize the mayor to accept the Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant award via the Harlingen Police Education and Community Fund, Inc., in the amount of twenty-two thousand, two-hundred and forty dollars for the purchase of ten automated external defibrillators, AED, and three hundred and fifty combat application tourniquets with pouches.
So staff submitted a grant application to the Firehouse Subs Foundation, and we have received word that we were granted the funds. So staff is recommending approval of accepting the grant for the purchase of the AEDs and the combat application tourniquets.
Motion to approve?
Second. There is no match.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Congratulations to the staff and for that local business being here in our community. If they had not opened up, I don't think we would be eligible, so congratulations to everybody. So motion carries. I think everybody voted. All right, item ten, consideration of possible action to accept or reject bids to abort the contract for the construction of tennis center pro shop at Pendleton Park under bid number twenty twenty oh seven to the lowest responsible bidder, and authorize the city to sign all necessary documents.
Mayor and Commissioners, you have a copy of the bid information in your packet. We did go out for proposals for bids for the construction of a new tennis center. We did receive a total of six proposals, six bids from different contractors, and if you recall, we had a conversation about including the showers as an alternate bid. This funding for this project is bond funds left over from previous projects specifically for the use of a park project. The budget for this project was six hundred and, oh my God, I might have to find it here, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nineteen dollars. The bid of six seventy-six, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars, the base bid submitted by RG Enterprises, DBA G and G Contractors, is the lowest bid. Staff is recommending that we accept that bid along with alternate number two. And alternate number two was for the monument sign out front for a total of six hundred and eighty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars, I'm sorry, for a subtotal of, yeah, six eighty-four, three eighty-two. The difference of eighty-four thousand, nine ninety-nine will come from the general fund fund balance. Again, the majority of these funds are bond funds and can only be used for park-related projects. The staff is recommending approval of that project.
Have we done business with this company?
G and G Contractors, yes, sir.
What did they do for us last?
They've done paving work, and they've done some construction projects.
Okay, and because I Googled them, and apparently back in twenty sixteen, they submitted a bid to Bell Park in Hidalgo, and there was an error in their bidding, which had to be adjusted. So, I mean, I just don't know if they had done other projects or?
Yeah, G and G has been around a while. They've done a lot of road projects, roadway projects. They have done, that I'm aware of, some construction projects. This is not a very big project, it's just over two thousand square feet. It's a good bid. They've got a bond, they would have to bond the project, not just a payment bond, but a performance bond.
So they don't specialize in buildings?
Uh.
Because paving and groundwork are different than construction.
They have done buildings. I know they've done paving work. I don't, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't have the detailed information in front of me.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so we checked the references, and we also looked into, they're doing some work right now with HCISD.
Who's that?
With commercial construction.
So they're doing work for who, Javier?
HCISD.
For the school district?
Yes, sir.
What are they doing for the school district right now?
They're doing a lot of remodeling for their gym and some of their campuses.
But it's not construction, right? Like building?
Yes, it is. It is commercial construction.
Well, remodeling and building are different, Javier.
So did we check any other references, Javier, any other projects?
Yes, out of the five references that he gave us, we checked them, and so he's done a lot of work, a lot of residential work for housing projects. He's done some for the city of Harlingen as well.
And again, residential codes and commercial codes are different. I just don't want to find out, you know, for whatever the difference is with other company that builds, that it's not going to cost us more in the long run.
One thing that we did, Dan, we sat down with him before we presented it or prepared anything for the city commission, was we checked with him to make sure that he included everything in his bid. He didn't expose or leave anything out.
So Javier, you're going to have to, let me convey all that, what you just said. So what Javier is saying is that we sat down with the contractor and went over his proposal, and you and the architect are satisfied that he can do the work, Javier?
Yes, sir.
Yes, the answer, he said yes. And you said that they're doing other projects for the school district, and they've done some other residential projects, right?
Correct.
Okay, he answered correct. And the building for the tennis center is just over two thousand square feet?
Total is thirty-seven hundred.
Thirty-seven hundred.
Yeah, air condition is twenty-one hundred, and patio is fifteen hundred.
Okay, so the air-conditioned space is twenty-one hundred square feet, and the total with patio is thirty-seven hundred square feet. Staff is recommending approval of the base bid and the alternate number two, but we certainly respect the wishes of the commission.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the bid?
Motion to accept the bid.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I oppose.
All right, motion carries. Item eleven, board appointments.
I have none.
I have none, Mayor.
None.
None, Mayor.
All right, so I was going to then go back to item three, which was the presentation by South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. What are we going to do?
I was going to ask you, do we, is it important if their presentation be audible to the audience or not?
I would assume so.
I didn't hear your.
Is it important for the audio portion of the presentation to be part of the meeting or not?
Well, I suspect that they would want to be able to.
Correct.
To tell, you know, to be able to answer questions if the commission had questions.
You have two people signed up to talk.
Is there a way we can do a brief break and get?
René, can you come over to town hall?
Yes, sir, I can be there shortly.
All right, why don't we go ahead and do the, let's go into executive session, and we'll do the executive session.
Or do you want to do the public comment now?
Then we'll do the presentation. I'm going to take up the public comment on the action item.
Got it.
Okay, public comment's going to come on the action item, but the presentation that they have prepared for, if Rainey can come over here, so we'll just, we'll go ahead and do the executive session next. So that would be item twelve. A, attorney consultation pursuant to section five fifty-two point oh seven one, Texas Government Code, to receive legal advice and counsel with respect to the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations relating to the existing installment agreements related to the payment of hotel occupancy taxes. And B, attorney consultation pursuant to section five fifty-one point oh seven one, Texas Government Code, to receive legal advice and counsel with respect to the city's rights, duties, privileges, and obligations pursuant pertaining to the existing franchise license agreement for the provision of emergency medical and transport services, South Texas Emergency Care Foundation, and related legal issues between STECF and the city of Harlingen. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen, we will be returning for a presentation and possibly some action, but in the meantime, we will be in a closed session with our city attorney seeking legal advice. All right, we're out of executive session at seven fifty-one. We've got Commissioner taking a bathroom break, so we'll wait for him.
Texas Emergency Care Foundation. We have Mr. Rene Perez-Petis to give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner, and I'll start my presentation here. We also had copies placed there in front of you. So my name is Rene Petis, I'm a nurse paramedic with the South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. I'm a director of patient transport services. Just kind of give you a quick overview of what we're doing here with the COVID responses here in the city of Harlingen and our surrounding areas. As you know, we're a nonprofit organization, providing free hospital care for the last forty years, since January of nineteen seventy-nine, doing emergency, non-emergencies transportation for our sick that are in the area. We also do fix wing and ground credit care transports within the foundation. Our fleet, I'll pop a little bit off, the ambulances that we have, thirteen type one MICUs, and I'll break those down here in a little bit that we can understand the difference between type one, type three. So we have thirteen type one MICU ambulances, three type three BLS MICU ambulances, four Ford F-250 supervisor response vehicles, two F-150 community health paramedic response vehicles, two aircraft that we utilize for fixing, and we have a Ford Transit vehicle that we use for repair. Now, going back on the slide, if you look at the photograph, those box trucks, those are what we call type one ambulances. Bigger vehicle allows us to transport up to four patients on backboards, and then, well, actually five, and then a car seat that's attached to it. So we actually, in a mass care situation, we can transport up to five patients in those box trucks. And that's important. The other thing that distinguishes what's inside the ambulance is the, these are MICU units, so they have, a paramedic has to be on board, so you get the highest level of care that you can get in the state of Texas. The BLS trucks or the BLS MICU ambulances we have, those are the vans, as you may see. A lot of companies are going to the vans because they're more affordable when you're doing long distance transports, and that's typically how we use them. and that's typically how we use them when we have to go to San Antonio or Houston or something like that. We use that type of vehicle. But they're all equipped the same and, you know, have the Lucas devices, which do CPR, ventilators, the new Zoll monitors. The new Zoll monitors as well.
What's the, what's the issue?
You need to step into the microphone, speak a little louder.
Okay, can you, can you please just take that microphone up, put it right on your, on your mouth?
You got it, sir. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's kind of the difference here on the, on the different type of ambulances that we carry. Of course, we also do provide the fixing services throughout the state of Texas and around the country as well. Winter Texans go back home, so we take them back. And a ground critical care transports, those are critical patients that are, need to go from one hospital to another hospital that are, that are intensive care units. And so those are specialized vehicles that we have to utilize to move some of these sick patients. On a, on any given day, ground ambulances, between eight and 11 MICU trucks are available daily. They're all staffed as MICU capable ambulances. If we need an ambulance for non-emergency transfers, then we'll utilize a BLS with MICU capabilities. And of course, critical care is always on standby. What you see, 90% of the outside ambulance services that are transporting to Harlingen are basic life support. So you typically see those small vans and they're usually just staffed with EMTs, so there was no higher level of care in these ambulances. Our response times, the average response times for emergencies in the city of Harlingen during this COVID event, so let's look at the, from March 5th to April 5th of 2019, our response times were seven minutes and .25 seconds. And in March 5th through April 5th of this year, was seven minutes and 38 seconds. March 14th through April 14th, we have responded 200, 220 calls for flu-like symptoms. So we are, we are seeing that type of call, an increase in that type of call. We have four different types of response levels. You know, at the ground level, you have those eight to 11 vehicles that are on the streets at all times. If we need to, we can activate additional trucks. Again, we have a total of 16 ambulances, so we can activate more trucks. And of course, the supervisors also respond. The supervisor vehicles are also equipped with all the equipment that the ambulances have, so we can go in and if we have to intubate a patient or start medications or whatever we need to do, we can do it off the supervisor vehicles as well. Of course, the third level is our mutual aid. Our friends at Los Fresnos, City of Los Fresnos, City of Brazos, Willacy County EMS, Port Isabel EMS. We have that group of folks that if we, if we need additional ambulances, we can request them. And then the fourth level of response levels is EMTF, the Emergency Medical Task Force. Now, I'll tell you a little bit about the EMTF. So the EMTF is comprised of medical response teams that are capable of activating available resources on a moment's notice. The responses are a scalable approach to disasters. The team consists of EMS, fire departments, hospital personnel. There are eight EMTF teams in the state of Texas, and these programs are funded by the hospital parish program. Now, I was a, and we continue to be very involved with the EMTF. So basically, if we need help, let's say there's a disaster in this area and it, we have too many patients, not enough people, what we'll do is make one phone call and we'll activate an ambulance strike team. And we can have between five and 10 ambulances in the, in the area within 35, 40 minutes, as, as long as we make the appropriate call at the right time. So it's important to activate that. I was part of, and I continue to be very involved in the EMTF. I was deployed to Hurricane Harvey, so I know the capabilities of the tent. We were able to serve almost 4,000 people in the tents and help them with medical care that was not available via tents. And if y'all attend the Harlingen Marathon, I usually bring EMT, one of the EMTF tents there so we can take care of our folks that are in the marathon. So that's kind of capabilities we have. If I needed to activate a tent right now for one of the medical facilities, I would just make the one call and we would start putting that team together immediately and we can actually respond. If we had an over, overburdened some patients, we can bring in those assets. So ambulance assets as well as medical assets to the area by the Emergency Medical Task Force. Our COVID, our COVID response, our call volume really has decreased, when you look at the whole picture, by about 7%. So from March 5th to April 5th of 2020, we had 967 calls. March 5th of last year to April 5th of last year, we had a total of 1,029 calls. So there's been a significant decrease in the calls, but we also have seen a lot of the flu. So our call volume is down, but we are seeing more flu. And so basically, we, since we have the stay-at-home, you know, policies around the county and all in the country, most of the country, we're seeing less people on the road, so less trauma. I'll tell you one thing though, our, you know, overall trauma calls are definitely down by about 50%. The number one trauma call that we see all the time is falls. And those are, we have some bad gravity, I guess, here in the area because we have a lot of falls and that's typically the number one trauma that we see in trauma centers is falls. So our COVID-19 operations, when you look at this graph, it shows you where we're kind of situated in the middle. As part of our communication system and, and the folks in the county and the state, what they're doing is they're releasing that information to us to feed out to the rest of the area, not only the city of Harlingen, but also the city of San Mito, Rojondo, Fair, all the areas that we service. So when we get a notification, which we do several times today, I updated all the departments in Harlingen about three different times. So when that information, when they have a positive patient that is coming from an address, what happens is they will relay that information to me and then I will relay that information to police department, fire department. And if, if we need to, we also look at the city and talk to Mr. Ramirez in the health department as well and give them that information. The goal here is to be informed when we're responding to these calls and we want to make sure that when we go to calls, that all the responders are aware that there's a positive patient or somebody is being monitored. That way we can take all the necessary precautions. As it is now, when we first were starting this whole thing, we had long conversations with fire administration. One of the things that we wanted to do, and we'll talk a little bit about it later on, but was make sure that we protect our first responders. Really, do we need to send a fire truck and an ambulance to somebody that has flu-like symptoms? And let's protect first and foremost our responders and as well as our PPE. So that's an important part of the whole thing and that's typically, that's what the arrangements that we made with the fire department. And that was, that was, that was a decision from the fire administration to do that. One of the things I want to talk to you about also is the community health paramedic program. Now, understand, this program was a, yeah, grant from the Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation. They've been great in providing the funding to help support this program. So basically what this is, is a single experienced paramedic that's responding to calls. And the way we first, the way we're gonna implement this program, and we're getting ready to implement this program, was for readmission patients, some of these patients that we see continuing in the ER and then going to their homes, visiting with them, educating them, and keeping them at home, right? That, that was the goal and not keep them in the hospital. Well, when COVID-19 came in, the pandemic came in, we had to turn our, our, our view at looking at these type of responses. So we started thinking, what if we just, so we can save PPE, we still have an experienced medic on that vehicle, we have all the equipment that you have on the ambulances, why don't we send the paramedic out and let the paramedic assess? We can educate and we can keep the patient at home. Because if you look at it, and Dr. Moen is, of course, is our medical director as well, and he wants to make sure that these patients, whether they're COVID positive or not, there's, it's still a flu type of thing. And so what we want to keep is people at home, right? The other thing that this brings into light is we're also bringing in the assessments to the house. So the medic will come in, assess the patient, let them know that if we need to do any, any care for the patient, we can do that there. And also, we're in the process of obtaining the tests, so we can do the testing for the COVID-19. So we can do it all in, within the confines of the home without moving the patient out. And I think that's one of the biggest things. When we're doing the, the testing at MMA, Mr. Sen, I was talking about that earlier, when we had that earlier in the month, we were seeing patients that were, had signs, symptoms, they were in a vehicle with their family with no masks, right? And so we're going, well, this is wrong. You cannot be doing that. You need to be, put a mask on and you shouldn't be bringing your kids out here, you know, you should be away from your kids. And there was a lot, we saw a lot of that. And so those patients that came out of those, that test that we did, we had quite a number of folks that were positive. So that was very concerning for us. And we really think that if we use this correctly, that we can make a big difference in, in helping to control, particularly in our area, how, how the exposure is. So that's a really important part. And again, monitoring is everything. If you look at, and we're talking to Dr. Castillo, some of the other folks regarding patient assessments and the things that we have to do, is probably the most important thing for folks that have COVID is just the simple oxygen saturation levels. Just check your, check the oxygen in their, in their blood system. Somebody that's really sick is gonna have a very low oxygen, oxygenation rate or level, and then you can recognize that immediately. The patient may not feel it, may not have signs, symptoms, but when you look at it, you're going, whoa, that's not good. And at that point, we can start the early treatments, get the patient to the hospital, and then again, start treating aggressively early on versus when the patient's already in a demise. So making sure that we get this information out is extremely important. Personal protection equipment, of course, this is a commodity. Of course, if we knew about it before this event, we would have made a lot of money because we were buying masks at 82 cents, a box of 20. We, you know, for eight bucks, we could have a box of 20 gloves, and now they're eight bucks a pop, right? So masks are very few, they're hard to find. The national stockpile, we finally got it into Texas and we actually got some supply of it yesterday. But stockpiles are available to 911 EMS providers first and we are considered a priority. For private, for profit, non-emergency EMS companies, usually if there's shortages, they're not gonna be at the top of the list because they're not a 911 provider. So usually federal, state, and local authorities don't, is not, is not immediate to get them, that type of equipment. They want to make sure that they get that to the 911 providers first. Let me kind of give you a quick medical facilities COVID update. Both Valley Baptist Medical Center and Harlingen Medical Center, our reporting emergency volume is down by 50 to 60%. And I want to say it's probably closer to 60 plus. And talking to Mr. Manny Vela and Matt at HMC, there is a reduction of folks going to the emergency room, which kind of helps us because it helps us turn around faster. So when we get to the hospital, there's beds available, we can offload and those ambulances are quicker, are out of the door a lot faster. So that's an important part, but unfortunately too, we're also considering, are there, why is ERs not as packed, right? Are some people, and we were hearing that, some folks are saying, well, I don't feel good, but I don't go to the ER because, you know, they may have the patient who has COVID, and so maybe that's what's holding them back. And so again, education is really big and that's one of the big things that we want to emphasize is the education of these folks about the disease process of COVID-19. And if you do everything that the mayor and the, and the judge are telling you to do, you're gonna come out okay. But you have to, you have to respect what they're telling you and do what they're saying as well. Our communications, the city of Harlingen have integrated their communication systems to provide the residents and visitors of Harlingen the state of art communication centers with the abilities to back each other up in the event of something becomes offline. This was a case during Hurricane Harvey, Harlingen Police Department, the communication center. They lost some power in that building over there. So then all they did was they moved over to our building, turned on radios and they were talking to the officers again. It didn't take them long at all. So that's, the integration there is really important. If you have a private EMS company would come in, it'd just be connected by phone line. So you don't have all that, the integrated components that make it easy for us to communicate with each other. Every department could talk to each other and we all know exactly what's going on at any given moment. Dr. Michael Moen has served with as STEC medical director, co-director since 2005, very involved. Was ER director of the Valley Baptist Medical Center for many years. Actually, when I worked in the ER, he was, he was my boss there too. So it's been a joy working with him. He oversees medical direction for the Harlingen Fire and Harlingen Police Department. And he, of course, recently was selected as the city of Harlingen health authority. He's a great asset, very easy to get, get with, and I think some of you that may have met him already and understand that he's, he's a great individual and he's very dedicated to taking care of the city. And I think he'll do very good work for the city of Harlingen and as you, as he already has, because we've been seeing a lot of positive things from him. Other than that, I want to just kind of tell you, we have been dedicated to the city of Harlingen. We were created by the Harlingen, city of Harlingen, as well as the Valley Baptist Medical Center. Got together and put the system together. We've had opportunities to, we've been asked by other cities to go provide EMS service in other cities in the area as well as other counties, but we remain truthful to Harlingen because that's where we got started. So we want to maintain our, our area here. We're very fortunate to have all the equipment and all the technology that goes with these ambulances. Like I said, the value of an ambulance is probably about $110,000, but when you, $110,000 just for the shell of an ambulance. But when you add the, all the electronics and the, and the equipment that goes inside, our ambulances run around about $250,000, $265,000 because there's a lot of equipment that's, that makes these things work. We're one of the first ambulance services to be, have the ability to transmit 1280 KGs in the field. We started doing that back in 2000 and last year they made it a mandate that all ambulances in the state of Texas had to do that, have that ability. We've been way ahead of that one. And of course, we did a lot of training with EZIO, which is a needle that we inject into the leg that starts IVs. We did the training for the folks at Vitacare. And once we finished the testing here, along with the city of Houston, city of Dallas, and city of Austin, those devices went out to the soldiers in the Afghan war and we've been using that device since then and been working great, saving a lot of lives. So on our side, we want to thank you for your attention and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer it.
Alright, does anybody have any questions? I'm gonna, I'm gonna do, we're gonna try to keep this orderly and I'm gonna start with Commissioner Uribe. You're gonna get a chance, ask all your questions at once and then we'll move down the line to anybody else who has questions, one at a time.
Okay.
I don't have any questions at this time.
You don't have any questions?
No, this time. I'm not, I'm not ready.
Yeah, I, I have.
Well, hang on, hang on, we're doing this one at a time. Did you have any questions?
Would you cover your nose? It's a mat.
My face is covered. I can't breathe.
We're, we're here.
This is to protect me.
For our protection.
My nose doesn't have anything.
It's not to protect you, it's to protect me.
Protect us.
I'm sitting right next to you.
I'm not breathing.
And if you cough on me, then you're gonna get the virus on me. But that, I bet, anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So Commissioner Uribe accused you of being incompetent. He has an email or a text or something from one of your employees and he was going to share that with us. Would you please read that to us, please?
It's not about incompetence.
Okay, what's it about? Read it to us.
I can read it, if you've got time.
Yeah, we've got time.
Fantastic. You can bring it up.
And what date and time was this sent you?
It's not accusing you of being incompetent. Okay, it's rather lengthy, okay?
Read it clearly so it could be in the record.
Okay. Mr. Uribe, to what we had spoke about and what I read about the procureurs' terms in regards to the ordinance. It was brought up, it was brought up to other EMS companies and Harlingen would be disruptive. How so? Another EMS provider would help relieve the workload of STEC by, by doing non-emergency transfers, which would clear STEC to do 911 calls, which is the only city contact that there is as far as doing calls. There's only a 911 contract. Non-emergency transfers are covered by city ordinance. Then there, then there's the claim that the level of care would be impacted. How is this so? All EMS providers go through the same state inspections and regulations. So how can anyone say the level of care can be affected by just someone's opinion? Also, there's the claim that the other EMS providers will come and charge more. Also, there's the claim that the other EMS providers will come and cha, and charge more. Also, this is not true. EMS providers get the majority of the payments from insurance such as Medicaid, Medicare, and private insurances, which, all which have a set payment chart, which tell EMS providers how much they can get per transport. This is a small amount of transfers who are self-paid, but these are, these are handled case by case and the, and the majority of the times, the EMS providers and PEC come to an agreement of payment. There is no, there, there is the advice, STEC says the call have, have, have current decreases during the current crisis, which might be true. There is still the fact that due to the city ordinance, STEC has to do all the non-emergency transfers for Harlan's, which includes two hospitals and its running, and its nursing homes. I'm sure if you ask them to provide the last week's call volume, you'll see the number of non-emergency transfers are equal to 911, if not greater, which brings me back to the point of why a STEC unit could, would be tied up doing non-emergency transfers when it's contacted with Harlan's is 911, not, non-emergency transfers. Once again, non-emergency transfers are covered by the city ordinance, not a contract. This is, there's no contract for non-emergency transfers yet, only STEC can do them, not allowing other companies to do so and relieve the stress on STEC so they can do 911. Then there's a question of response times. STEC claims that the average is seven minutes and 40 seconds on their call responses time, which is just under the national average of eight minutes. But why in a small city where they claim to have 13 ambulances available, average of seven minutes and 40 seconds time when the national average is eight? Also, it is that fire department can arrive to the call sooner than the ambulance. Well, there are many reasons. Some are human errors such as cruising, sleeping, and bathroom breaks. All of these which are national problems and have nothing to do with STEC. Then there's the fact that the ambulance that should be responding to 911 call is already on an emergency and nearest available ambulance has to respond. Or just the fact that the ambulance being at the hospital for an emergency, then before can take anything from one hour to three hours depending on the distance of the transfer, which includes Brownsville to McAllen, because I, I have said before, STEC does, Brownsville transfer is depleting its Harlan's cover. And that does not include the transfer goes to San Antonio or Houston. And the majority of it's most of all is a time that these trucks are not replaced in Harlan's. As a subject of STEC fueling Harlan's, yes, there are, are that, that includes the Feria and San Marino trucks. You asked if STEC current, current ambulances cover, coverage is sufficient, which I said yes, only by doing 911 calls. When you bring the volume of non-emergency transfers into the picture, the answer is no. There is always the possibility of ambulances being tied up, non-emergency transfers that should be available to do 911 calls. STEC claims to have 13 ambulances in service, which is not either correct, which is also not either correct. They manned in Harlan's only not including the Feria, San Marino, seven ambulances Monday, Tuesday, and Friday. Eight ambulances on Wednesday and Thursday. Five on Saturday and four on Sunday. This is not to mention that Monday through Friday on those ambulances is basic life support, which do not or cannot do 911 calls after 9:00 PM on Monday through Friday. The ambulance coverage does, gets done to four, down to four ambulances because they have some ambulances that only work 12-hour shifts through the day. STEC lets you know all the great things they're doing regarding 911 calls, but they do not tell you about the delays they have on non-emergency transfers because they are tied up doing all workload on their own. Patients on non-emergency transfers have to wait time, at times hours to get home or even worse, the hospitals to wait hours for their beds to be cleared for a new patient because the patient that needs to be transferred out is holding calls. STEC is unable, unable to manage the load of all, all its work. At the end of the day, STEC is a great provider, but is at times overwhelmed to the demand that it's putting itself by trying to do all the workload for almost the entire city and county, Catlin County, which in turn affects the city of Harlan's greatly.
And who is that from?
I, I am not going to do it in public.
Pardon?
I'm not going to do that. I, I, I'll share that with you all.
No, no, you should share it in public.
No, I'm not, I'm not going to do that.
Because I can.
You made, you made an accusation, but you won't give the source of it.
No, I, 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 I can, I'll be happy to forward it.
No, who is it?
Well, but I mean, he, he would know, he would know what the, you, you're not allowing him to cross-examine the witness or to understand who the, who the, who's making these statements. I mean, it's just so unfair. You said, it, it, it's not fair.
And, and, yeah, who is this? We need to know.
Josh, 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 J O S U E Aldan, A L D A N?
He's an ex-employee.
Oh, an ex-employee.
He owns a, a non-emergency transfer company in Wesslaco.
Oh, he owns a transfer company in Wesslaco.
You made this sound like you got this letter. When did you get the letter?
You told us that he was a STEC employee.
He was a STEC employee.
You, you told him, he was, you told us he was working there currently.
So he's competition. He wants a contract.
He, he's not a STEC employee.
He's, he no longer working.
How long did he work for you?
Oh, funny.
He was there a couple of years.
You know, you shouldn't talk about HR stuff other than he worked there and doesn't. Has he been gone for longer than a month? Has, did?
I don't know.
Yes, he's been gone longer than a month. So what's going on currently is no reflection of what's going on because that, that letter, he doesn't even have firsthand knowledge of what's happened in the last 30 days. And as we've been talking, this is really about our ability to respond in an emergency situation and.
So you're trying to destroy a contract.
Okay, Mike, did you have? I've got questions.
That's not true. You're putting words, that's not true.
Well, I have an opportunity to debate some more. Ask, ask.
Questions.
Let's conclude the presentation by asking him questions.
So, your calls are down. In the last two weeks.
Yes, sir.
The car insurance companies have rebated towards $3 billion in automobile premiums, including my insurance company and I'm guessing everyone here, because nationally with this stay-at-home, stay-in-place, there's less traffic and there's less automobile wrecks, less body damage, injuries, death.
Yes, sir.
And so they have all this money. And your, your numbers up there reflect that calls are down, ER visits are down, car wrecks are down, and all that's fabulous. And so I believe you're telling the truth.
Well, I am, sir. And the other thing is, my conversations with all the other EMS providers and, and the 911 providers in the valley have the same, are saying the same thing. The trauma, the auto accidents, all that is down.
Right.
The conversations with the state EMS directors, same thing. Around the state, a lot of those accidents, you know, because everybody's at home.
Right.
So you've not seen that, right?
The only constant is gravity and people are falling.
Yeah, people are falling, yeah.
Because people always fall and they always fall.
That's a, that's a big one all the time, sir.
Right. And you mentioned O2 sat. Just, just curious, what, what level do you get your alarms ringing on an O2 sat? 95?
Well, you know, we're, the optimum, of course, is the 100%.
Right.
But at 92% is, is when we're starting.
Yeah, 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 that's time to, to hit the, hit the alarm.
That's when we start looking at, well, what's going on with the patient because the sat's already below the, the norm, right?
Okay, so, so I, I'm just curious if I could ask Mr. Quante a few questions.
Sir. No, no, no. Mayor, I'd like to go back into executive session. I want to request legal counsel at this time.
Hold on, hold on.
Right, no, I, I like to.
Can I ask my questions at least?
I'd like to get into legal, I want some legal advice right now before, before I proceed with this meeting.
Well, are you, are you intending to ask him some more questions?
No, I want to, I want to go into, I'm, no, I'm done. I want to ask legal questions.
I want to, I want them to conclude their presentation.
Sure, okay.
We need to let them conclude their presentation and so we will have an opportunity, if there's act, if somebody tries to move forward with the action item, we'll have an opportunity to discuss and debate, but right now, we want, we want STEC to finish their presentation. So I said I'd give everybody a chance to ask him follow-up questions. So Commissioner Mesmer, do you have any other questions for STEC?
So mutual aid.
Yes, sir.
As I understand it, we have fire, fire departments, Harlan's and all the communities should have big fire happen someplace. There's mutual aid. Fire departments go and help each other out.
Yes, sir.
Should there be a police, big police action, state, federal, locals can all help each other out.
Yes, sir.
And you're telling me that we actually have mutual aid with ambulances?
Yes, sir, we've been doing that.
And that should a big, a big event happen in Harlan's, outside ambulances can come and help us out.
Yes.
And hurricanes.
Yes, sir. Actually, every storm, every storm break.
You could go to Corpus or Portland.
Right.
Or Houston or Beaumont.
Right.
And they can come here and help us out.
If we had a major.
If we had a major event that needed extra help.
Yes, sir.
And utilities have mutual aid. When the hurricane comes through and all the lines are down, utility company, they send their workers, their linemen from all over the state and country for mutual aid. So do we indeed have mutual aid agreement with everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we, if we need it, we could have help.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Del Rosso.
Well, I have only two questions for you. On the ambulance, what kind of personnel do you have in each ambulance while they're in duty?
Okay, so the mobile intensive care, the MICU trucks have to have a paramedic onboard. Occasionally, we'll run two paramedics onboard or we'll run a paramedic EMT onboard, which is a state requirement. So it just depends on, you know, how many medics you got working on that day. But, but every MICU has to have a paramedic onboard.
Okay. And I saw on the presentation, you have two Cessnas. How far do you fly and what kind of personnel flies in the Cessna?
So our fixed wing aircraft are, we, we went to Michigan, I believe, a couple of, maybe two weeks ago. Winner texting going back home, got sick and needed to go back home. Those are, they're distances. We stay within, we don't go international. We used to do that way back in the day, but before 9/11, that was something we could do. But after 9/11, it became a little harder for us to do. So we were flying just within the, the United States. And so we could fly the main or, you know, the different places that we've been, have been, you know, we, we can leave here, it's 90 degrees and get to Minnesota and it's minus four. So, you know, that, it's a, and it can be an extreme. So those aircraft are staffed by flight medics. That's a more training that's required for that. Myself, I'm a flight nurse, paramedic. I did the training for that. It's an additional amount of school and certification that goes with that. These medics are trained in everything from ventilators, doing cricottherodomies, you know, all the different skills that we have to do to keep our, our, our skills up. So those are the medics. They, they do a lot of the ICU patients as well because they're more trained with those type of medications. So it's just, it's just a higher level of, of training that we have to do to qualify for that, for that position. We have, every shift has several flight medics. We try to keep them separate that way in the event there's a request in the middle of the night, then, then we can have a, a flight medic available for those flights. And typically, we fly two flight medics per, per, for, per flight you have to, you want to have two medics onboard that aircraft.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Turn the mic on. Everybody can hear me? Yes. Okay, so Commissioner Mesmer asked you about mutual aid and I didn't know how he was going to ask it, so I'm going to re-ask it.
Okay.
So a few years back, we, we had an ordinance that talked about outside ambulances coming into Harlan's. They would bring somebody to a dialysis clinic, they would stay there idling and then be able to take the patient back.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes.
And so I, I know that happens because it's just a part of life.
Right.
Right? But currently, do you ever, or, I don't know how to ask the question, but do you have to call outside ambulance service to come and help you all with your internal transfers when you're transferring people from a clinic to a hospital, from a nursing home to another nursing home?
If it's a, if it's a non-emergency, let, let's take Willacy County, for example.
Yes, sir.
If we have a patient that has to go to Rotama Manor in, in Ramonville and the folks from Willacy County are here, we'll just ask them to, to take that patient back. That way we don't pull the truck out, out of service. So we do that with, with, you know, particularly those type of patients that are going back, that ambulance is going to go back deadhead and, and Mr. Torres, the director over there is willing to take those patients back if, 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 if time allows them to and what have you. Of course, usually we want to make sure we have that communication done before that ambulance leaves the hospital. That way they don't have to come back or anything like that. So yes.
So you're communicating with the other ambulances to know that they may have a unit in the area and you may have to be able to, to hook them up with a, so they don't have to deadhead back. Is that correct?
Sure, sure.
Okay. And then, this is an opinion. So COVID, all of a sudden, we get overwhelmed.
Right.
We get swamped. Is that going to be universal, or is that going to be unique to Harlan's or is that going to be universal to the valley?
You know, every, every city's going to deal with it differently and, and it's unique here in the fact that we got nursing homes involved. One of the, I had the meeting with mayor a couple of Saturdays ago and I, I called him and I talked to the city and I said, I am seeing a couple of calls in a nursing home and I think that we should look into this. And I remember talking to the mayor, again, it was a Saturday. And I, and we, at that point is when we kind of pulled the emergency cord and we had a meeting with county and state as well. And it, all it took was just looking at, at that. And then once we started looking at it deeper, we also found out that, wait, there's an employee here that, that, you know, was, was testing positive. And at that point, you know, we, we knew that, at that point, we were looking at something that probably was going to get a little worse. That's, you know, the, that's the things that you want to look at, particularly right now with this COVID stuff. What makes it unique now for us here is, is those two nursing homes and hopefully no more. We want to make sure that we keep everybody else clean. That's what separates us from the rest, because if you look at the numbers and if we could, if we were to take out the numbers from the nursing homes, we'd be doing really well. I mean, Harlan's would be, you know, we'd be, we'd be patting each other's back going, man, you know, we don't have that many. I mean, we're going to get it and regardless, but, but we wouldn't have any fatalities, you know, that kind of thing. Those are all, you know, that's what makes us, you know, wait a minute, you know. What makes us unique is that we have three fatalities and, and actually four, the Willacy County should count on our side because he passed away here, but he was, he lived in Willacy County. So when you look at that, every city's going to, you know, see it differently. Every community, if they listen to their public officials, will hopefully get their community involved in the social distancing, wearing the mask and all that, then you're going to have better numbers in those facilities. So every, everyone's going to have a different crisis. I, I think for us, the good thing is that we caught this on the earlier side. And because if not, we may have had, I mean, we still have a lot of folks, but it could have been a lot worse. And I think the education part of it is a key thing. I really, really feel what, what's going to make us unique, I think, as we roll out the Community Health Paramedicine Program, that single medic with the ability to test at the home, with the ability to reassess that patient every other day or every three days, is going to make a difference in the way people feel about having the disease. Because, I mean, it's the flu, right? It's just a, it's a bad one. And so what we're seeing is the folks that call 911 right now and they say, I got the flu, I want to go to the hospital. And we're like, okay, well, what part of the flu is requiring you to go to the hospital? Well, no, it's just, I, you know, I got a fever and I got a cough. Okay. Really don't need to go to the hospital for that, but, I mean, we're going to transport you if you want to go. The thing is, what, what they're going to do at the hospital is really, they're just going to check you out and say, yeah, you have the flu, you got to go home because we don't want you here. And, and not to say it in that manner, but, you know, they, they're not, it's not an admission that they can have. Once they're getting a little more sick or they're having difficulty breathing or, you know, any of those other symptoms, then definitely the patient should be in the hospital. those other symptoms, then definitely, the patient should be in the hospital. But a majority of folks can get over this thing at home, and if they do it the right way, and checking oxygen saturations and vital signs every couple of days, just to make sure they're doing good. I think that program's going to do really well in, in getting that education to the folks, and then keeping them there, I think, without spreading it anymore. I had a lady that called me this afternoon. Her brother is, requires care at the home. His daughter, or her daughter takes care of her uncle, and her daughter tested positive. So she can't take care of him. And she, and the sister, who's the one that was calling me, can't go either, because she was hanging around with the daughter. So the exposure's there. So her question is, "What do I do? I don't have a home, I don't have a care provider for this individual that needs to be taken care of." And so we went around with different suggestions, and I think she, she ended up, we hung up the phone, we had better idea. And I said, "Call me back tomorrow, and I want to make sure that I can send somebody," whether, just to, just check on him, making sure everything's okay. And again, I think this program is going to make a difference in our community.
So that was my third question, was this, so again, part of what your proactiveness is this program, because now, if somebody thinks that they have COVID, or they have something wrong with them, y'all can dispatch a paramedic there, assess the patient, which is all that's going to happen when they get to the ER. They're going to get triage.
Right.
They're going to figure out what's really wrong with them, and if it's not life-threatening, they're going to say, "Go home, call your, your doctor." And, and, and so basically, you're going to do this in their home.
Yes, sir.
So the follow-up to that is, if you guys do go there, or gals, the, the paramedic goes out there and discovers that there's a strong possibility that this could be COVID, because the signs are there, the low oxygen, the, the breathing, the dry cough rather than a wet cough. Y'all put them on the monitor list at that point, to monitor them, without having to transport them?
Well, you know, the, the, the key thing is, if they have any type of life-threatening condition, then yeah, they're going to hospital.
Correct.
We'll call an ambulance. Ambulance will come in. If not, then yes, we can continue monitoring that patient at home. We can advise the county, and of course, everything has to go through the county and make sure our numbers are, are, are reported. And then again, on our side is, continue that visit every other day, every third day, however we see that patient may need that visit. And then, and get that care to them. Because right now, I mean, that's not happening. As we roll this out, then definitely, we want to see that more and more.
And did I misunderstand you? Y'all plan on carrying the kits with you also?
One of the, one of the, one of the things is, is to carry the kit, the, a testing kit. Now, they're hard to come by right now, and you talk to county, and you talk to the state, you know, everybody's having issues getting kits. So that's, that's, we're coming in going, "Can I have some kits?" And, and talking to Valley Baptist and Dr. Romero, they feel they, they can help us out with a lot of that. And, and that'll be important, because, because we can test them at home. Because a, a lot of the, everybody's asking the question, "Do I have it?" Right? And if we have the ability to test it and keep them at home, and then tell them, "You know what? Negative. But you know what? You got the flu, but, you know, you're going to stay home a couple of days, and then if your symptoms go away, you know, you, keep the mask on until you feel better, and then you can go on with your, with your social isolation." But if you test positive, it's the same thing. You're going to stay there, you're going to be wearing a mask, and try not to contaminate your family. The reports that we got from Rojondo from yesterday, we had, I believe, we had nine patients out of Rojondo. And that's all, it's all in the house, right? There's two residences, and even the police chief, like, comments with him on email. He goes, "Wow." Because, I mean, it was, you know, two residences, and it was all communicable, you know, they were just family members, and they got each other sick. Nobody was wearing masks. And, and that's the way it's going to spread. And so we have to really make it a point to educate. So when you find that positive in the house, and we go assess them, they're going to get a mask, and you're going to educate them and tell them, "You know, you need to be in that room, and you need to stay away from everybody else, because you're going to give it to them." And that, and that's, we need to stop that spread. And I think education is going to be big for this, for us to go forward with this thing.
And back to the issue at hand, by, by doing that, we're not expending a MICU unit.
Exactly.
Or we have it available for the true emergency.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and you answered the last one, which was about the COVID cases, and the fact that the majority of the ones that we have in Harlingen can be attributed to the two nursing homes and the families of those that are associated with that nursing home, from what I understand from the judge, and what you're saying now with the Rojondo bug.
Exactly.
I keep hearing this over and over. The, the sheltering and places working, we just got to be vigilant.
Very vigilant.
Thank, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Well, then, that concludes all the questions, and that concludes the presentation. I want to thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
I want, thank you very much. Thank you very much for everything that you guys are doing for us. We really, we really do appreciate it.
It's been a long month, sir.
All right. All right, we're going to go to item thirteen.
Sir, I'd like to go into executive session. I need to ask for legal advice right now.
All right.
From the attorney.
Okay, did you make a motion?
I, I'd like to, yes, I'd like to make that motion.
You have to make a motion to go on executive session. We don't, that, that motion has to be voted on.
Does it have to be specific at what it's about, or no? Just to talk to attorney?
Yes.
Concerning?
No, it has to, has to be regarding an item.
Yes, it's got to be regarding an item, is it?
It is, is this specific item.
Thirteen?
This, the one we discovered.
The presentation?
Yes, sir.
Is that a, is the presentation an act, an appropriate executive session item?
Well, there's no action on it. It's just a presentation, so...
I, I need to ask your advice, because items came up out of our executive session, and I want to ask the attorney's advice on that.
So Allison, did you hear that?
No, I didn't.
Could you repeat that, Commissioner?
I said items came up here in the last, this last exchange of items that, that were in executive sessions, which I believe are protected by executive session, and I want to get your legal opinion on that.
Did you get that?
Discuss thirteen or twelve B. I mean, if you have further questions on that, I think that's permissible.
It, it's regarding the items that were in executive session that came out right now. And I'd like, I'd like to discuss that with you. As the board.
Well, you can't, I mean, you have to make, you have to make a motion, and you have to make it related to an item that is subject to needing to talk to the attorney about.
I would like to talk.
And the presentation is not an item that you need to talk to.
Let me rephrase it then. I would like to talk to the attorneys regarding the items that were discussed in the executive session.
So are you saying you want to talk about item thirteen, or twelve A, or twelve B?
Which one's A?
It would be, it would be item thirteen.
It would be item thirteen, Allison?
Item thirteen is an action item, so...
Then it's, it's the one before that.
Executive on that, but really, it would be more appropriate to, to do it under twelve B.
Yes.
Tie to each other. Thirteen is the action item related to twelve B.
Yes, okay. I would like to make that motion. And I won't take long.
All right, well, he's, all right, there's a, there's a motion to go on to executive session under, back on item twelve B. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm opposed, but...
Okay, well, I have two.
I know, you have two, you have two. They didn't say anything. I, I'm going to stand opposed.
Hmm? Opposed?
Mine's opposed.
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 Okay. So we're not going to go back into executive session. Item thirteen, I need to, I need to, we need to call the two people that wanted to comment. So let them comment before we take up item thirteen.
Would the attorney be available? I don't know if you can see me. Are you available after, right after this meeting?
The city attorney, the city attorney represents the, the commission as a whole, not any one of us individually.
Okay.
But you can talk to, you can ask them, but, you know, you're, the city commission advise, the city attorney advises the commission.
Yes, sir.
Not just us individually.
Correct.
Well, I think his concern is, we discussed some items in executive session, and it was discussed out here, so that's why.
I'm just stating.
So he can't talk to the attorney?
He?
Right? Yes.
Well, all right, that's, the first person.
Okay, Mayor, the first person is Ron Lozano. His address is 2410 Riverside Drive, and I'll call him right now.
Okay.
If that's okay. Okay?
Make sure that you, we're speaking to the microphone, Amanda. Hold, hold the phone up to the microphone.
Okay, let me do that, please?
Please.
Okay, let's see. Five, three, six.
You put the speaker on, what? No, the speaker ain't on.
Oh, yes, I did.
Ron Lozano.
Ron, this is Amanda with the City of Harlingen.
I realize that I'm, I'm keep, yeah, I'm keeping up with the mayor's cowardly rejection of the last assertion by both Uribe and Plente. He didn't answer. And that's one of the things that was noted in the article about this presentation, and Mr. Perez is still there, that there's an absence of evidence that there will be any kind of lesser type of service if there can only be one.
We can't hear you, Ron.
Well, just turn the, I can hear you.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. Let me turn off this thing again. I was saying that there was an inference that this was a cross-examination environment, which is totally absurd. The one person that didn't even want to go to direct examination and is afraid of cross-examination is Mayor Boswell. And that's been exhibited regarding many items that are being written right now for the appellate court. But the lesser service that I was referring to regarding STEC is in the article by their favorite organ, the Valley Morning Star. There's a reference that the City of Harlingen has a state-of-the-art communications center, Mr. Perez. If you're still there, I'd like for you to respond. Why could not another private vendor utilize something that taxpayers are paying for? And Mr. Vernet Perez, what is, that's who I'm referring to when I say Perez. Vernet Perez, you're not an MD. Can you please tell us what your answer is?
He's no longer here. He already stepped out.
Well, so now there's a violation again of the Toma, and the mayor knows that. And the mayor fails yet again to understand that on September 1st of last year, he didn't know about the new law, and therefore, he let Mr. Perez leave without being able to be asked anything.
Ten seconds.
So there again, there is the deception that Mr. Uribe really needs a lawyer right now. And I think he should get one. Thank you.
All right, let's call the next person.
Yes, Mayor. Telia Cabasos Gomez, her address is eighteen, eighteen oh six F, Flamingo Lane. Let me call her right now. Hello, Mrs. Gomez. This is Amanda Lisondo with the City of Harlingen. And you're up for citizens' communication. I'm going to put the two-minute timer, and you may start now.
Hi, Mayor and Commissioners. I want to talk about the EMS services as well. I want you to consider to take a possible action to actually add another EMS, although I am completely okay with, well, actually, I would like to add, for you to consider adding an additional EMS, EMS services to our city, because as a family, as a patient, I have waited in a specific emergent, emergency standalone area for about six hours as a patient. And as a patient, I will tell you that I was a possible patient where I was in a very, hold on just a minute. I was a patient where I was putting potential personnel there in, in a, in a dangerous situation. It was Dr. Mo, Moan, excuse me. He was my doctor. And I had to wait almost six hours to be transferred. And, because transfers always are the lowest part of it. And, and I had pneumonia at the same time. I will be one to say that I was the patient, so there is no HIPAA violations. And as a family member, I, and a family member, was it a terrible incident, unknowing what was his bodily, bodily injuries, what bodily injuries were involved. Our current EMS, which I did speak to Mr. Perez about, we didn't always have the best, unprecedented talk about service. He was sat in a stretcher in an, in, in the, in our ambulance.
Ten seconds.
No sign collar was put. He wasn't, he wasn't put in a collar. The point is, we need to have options. And we don't. And I would like you guys to know that and consider that.
Ten minutes are up.
There you go.
All right.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
All right, so is there anyone else that signed up for public comment on this item?
That's it, no.
All right, then we go to item thirteen, which is consideration, possible action, if any, to directive administrative and legal staff to take the necessary steps to modify the existing licenses, agreements, ordinances, and resolutions to allow for alternate outside ambulatory services and care within the City of Harlingen and its surrounding areas to temporarily remove STECF's exclusive rights in order to have choice in ambulatory services for a period of six months, or until the governor or county judge lifts the state of emergency's ever come first, and to present required legal instruments for consideration and action, as are, or the wishes of the commission.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hmm?
I'll make a motion to approve.
So you want to make changes?
Yeah, second.
You want to make changes? Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
I don't know if they say aye.
Is there any discussion? Why do you want to approve the item?
I want to vote on it.
Hmm?
I want to vote on it. It's up for consideration.
All right, okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, I would, I would just like to say that I think it would be certainly unwise to do anything that would tamper with the exclusive right of South Texas Emergency Foundation to continue providing ambulatory services in the City of Harlingen, because they, they are the premier emergency care operator in, in the state of Texas. We have a very unique partnership with them, a partnership that has really been created by the City of Harlingen, and an organization that was really created by the City of Harlingen. To allow potential other companies to come in and undermine their ability to perform these services by taking revenue away from them would undermine the various services that we desperately need at a time like this, when we have this pandemic in our midst. And so, I would urge the committee to vote, the commission, to vote against this, to do so in a unified manner, and to express support for South Texas Emergency Foundation, whose first responders are providing us, who are really risking their own health every single day, 24 hours a day, to keep our community safe and healthy. So with that, I would like those who are in favor to raise their hand. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Well, don't, since we're on, don't they have to hear us also?
All those who are opposed, raise your hand.
Opposed.
All right, the, the motion fails, and that concludes our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.